Is it, do we have Debbie or do we have? Oh, there we go. All right, let's get going then. So I'd like to call the January 19th, 2022 board meeting to order and remind everyone to please mute your audio when not speaking, as well as state your name prior to making a comment or motion and second for an action item. Thank you. I'll ask each commissioner, please respond with a here when I call out your name. Commissioner Bagnell.
According to Dave's note, it looks like we may have lost her.
Yeah.
So we may need to pause here and get her joined.
Yeah, I see that. Okay.
Let me reach out to her.
She had been having trouble lately with that dropping out. I'm not sure why. Bernice, have you made it back?
I just sent her a text, so.
Thank you.
Her icon indicated she had a poor network connection and then she dropped out. So it looks like she's probably going to try and rejoin here.
Hopefully she's somewhere sunny, warm and dry right now and joining us remotely remotely. See if this works. Although I'm sure places like Palm Springs have internet.
She said she's having trouble joining with sound and she is trying again as we speak. So.
Alrighty, we can hold on pause for another minute or two, no problem.
On a Sunday, Google updated itself and destroyed all my interconnections. So I spent yesterday at the Geek Squad and they got everything fixed. But I'd never heard of, you know, an update to a program I'm not using, doing nasty things to my computer.
Good thing for the Geek Squad.
So Tim, she's having problems connecting here. She's saying it's just saying connecting, but nothing's happening. Should I tell her to reboot?
Yes, please.
Too early for a joke. I'm trying to save my joke for the end, so no one, no one groans at me. I was thinking maybe Dave, you could sing.
With all due respect, nobody wants that. So sorry.
Nobody wants that?
Nope, nobody wants that.
I was gonna recommend we look at my video from my rafting trip on Saturday, but my language gets a little spicy when my, my rowing partner flips his boat, which is the best part of the video, but that's when my language kind of goes south at the same time. So we can't do that. We can do like I do before class and we'll watch funny pet videos from YouTube.
Commissioner Schmidt, it looks like you're talking, but we can't hear you. You're muted.
I said normally I would give blood, but nobody wants blood with multiple myeloma in it.
Yeah, that's, that's what they tell me too, but now I'm so old, they won't take my blood anyway.
My daughter just hosted a blood drive about three weeks ago during the holidays. For the same reason that's on our presentation.
Yeah.
They did it in, it's called Clear Auto Care, which is on the corner of Milliken and I'm not going to know the name of the second row, but it's right there behind where New Seasons is in Beaverton. And it's a, it's an automobile sales company. And they did it kind of in the showroom space. They didn't have very many cars in there, but I come walking in and, you know, start to get set up and two guys walk in and start a car up and open up the, one of the, you know, big sliders and drive the car out while people are giving blood. I'm like, oh, that's first for me.
So I have Bernice on the phone and she can hear. And when she speaks, you will all hear through my mic. She's going through the process of rebooting her computer, trying to get back in on Teams. So we're going to do this a bit archaic right now, at least to get this rolling. And while she tries to rejoin here through her laptop, is that okay?
I think that's just fine. So if Bernice is able to hear, I'll ask each commissioner to please respond with a here when I call out their name. Commissioner Bagnell?
I'm, I'm, I'm sort of here. Oh, my gosh. I think I might be finally getting there.
It looks like you're on for real, Bernice.
Yay. So, so I can get off the phone now?
I think we can hang up the phone and it looks like you should be able to speak through Teams.
Great, thanks.
Okay.
All right. Should we try this one time, Bernice, and see if it works? Commissioner Bagnell?
I am here, except that then I forgot to unmute.
There we are.
I didn't want anybody to hear any of my words of frustration while I was trying to get here.
Wonderful. It's good to have you here. Commissioner Doan?
Here.
Commissioner Duggan?
Here.
And Commissioner Schmidt?
I'm here.
All right. So we're going to begin this evening with a report by the CEO and management staff.
Thank you. So let me jump to the slide here. I don't have a lot for my updates. So Portland crypto-spridium results for the month of December 2021. The Portland Water Bureau reported one crypto-spridium osis detection in water samples collected from the Bull Run headworks. Portland Water Bureau will continue increased sampling four times per week until there are at least three weeks without any detections. Complete results of Portland's crypto-spridium monitoring are posted on the city's website. So that is all I have for CEO updates tonight. So I am going to jump to our safety minute and to department report and turn this over to Andrew.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Well, good evening, President Sanders, Board of Commissioners and members of the public. I've got the safety moment and the department report tonight. Both will be fairly concise. The safety moment tonight is about the national blood crisis. Red Cross is telling us that this is the worst blood shortage in over a decade. The blood supply is at dangerously low levels and that, as you can see, that's forcing hospitals to defer patients from surgery, including organ transplants. So if you're able to donate, the Red Cross is recommending and hoping that you can donate. And so for the next slide here, I've got a 30 second PSA from the Red Cross. And thank you for sharing, President Sanders, about your, your family, the blood drive your family was involved with. All right. So moving on now to the department report, I've got an update tonight on the customer information system project. Again, I'm going to give you some reminders. We haven't spoken since, I believe, fall last year. So a few reminders what we're doing. An update and I've got a list of upcoming topics, quite a few to be in front of you of the coming, over the coming months. So again, what are we doing in this project? We're replacing the, the legacy utility billing system or UB with a commercial off the shelf customer information system. And again, this is a, is building on the collaborative business relationship between TVWD and Clean Water Services. The update tonight is you can see the phases we have of the implementation, planning and analysis, design and construction, testing and training and go live, and then stabilization after the go live. We're in the testing and training component of the implementation. We're still projected right now to go alive in May of this year. The schedule does remain tight, but we are prioritizing quality if there's significant trade offs between quality and schedule. Some of the activities the team's taking part of right now are data conversion, testing, system integrations. We have quite a few integrations, planning the customer communications and outreach, and also user training for staffs. In terms of shut offs, we haven't finalized this, but we're looking at the possibility of pausing shut offs when we start training, just in terms of staff capacity. And that also aligns with what's best practice for tailing down collections during the run up to a cutover. Post-go live operations, currently we're assessing the, and preparing for the operations post-cutover. And as part of that, we're, we've started discussions with Clean Water Services for our operations intergovernmental agreement or IGA. In terms of board communications, I do have a following slide to give you a sense of what's coming your way for presentations to you and the public. And then for some of the initial topics, you'll see, we've got a customer portal demo, talk about the customer communications plan and a detailed project overview. And then finally, COVID-19 impacts, we may have some training logistics impacted. But other than that, we've been able to keep going in a almost entirely remote project fashion, although next week we do have quite a few activities happening onsite. All right. This is just a reminder of Clean Water Services and TVWD. As you know, the, both agencies have been joint billing since the 1990s. The current IGA has amended in 2005. We have five year renewals that expires in 2025. We'll have one in place far before that, but just as a reminder for everyone, this is a longstanding joint billing relationship. Some of the costs that are currently shared, we have got allocated service costs, we've got reimbursable expenses for direct staff services. And then direct staff, staff services can include things like finance, accounting and IT. And this is a reminder of our phasing and agreements strategy for this initiative. The first phase was for initiation through vendor selection and contract negotiations. The board, both boards authorized that in the summer of 2018. The second phase is for the implementation and that was authorized in April of 2020. And then finally, we get to the ongoing operations agreement, which we're tackling really right now. So this is the, the main topic I really wanted to cover with you tonight is topics will be presented to you and the public over the next coming months. And this assumes that the go live remains May 2022. If that shifts, the sequence of these activities will shift as well. So at the work session in February, we'll give you an update on the implementation schedule. And we'd also like to give you a demo of the customer self-service portal. At the regular meeting in February, we'll give you an overview of the customer communications and outreach plan. And then looking towards March at the work session, we'll have a detailed project overview. And we'd also like to talk to the finance committee in March, just to have a more detailed review of ongoing operations. And then we'll have something similar at the April work session on the operations IGA components. It won't be finalized at that point. But then going to the regular meeting, hopefully we'll have the, the framework for the operations IGA and give you a go live preview. And then on, on May 3rd at the work session, assuming that we go live in early May, this would be a go live report. And then mid-May, give you an update on the stabilization. And then in June, giving you updates on the stabilization and what we're calling phase two. And phase two are really the improvements that will roll out in sequence following the stabilization. It's the continuous improvement of the system. We're building the foundation right now, but phase two is the successive rollouts that the partners agree on. And these could be things like advanced payment methods. It could be affordability measures. It could be things like a bill redesign, but we'll need to prioritize that. But we'll give you an idea in June, what that looks like at that time. So that's what I have for tonight, really concise. But again, we'll be back in front of you quite a bit over the next couple of months. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain them.
Andrew, this is Todd Sanders. I was just wondering, with the phase two implementation, when you're in the end of the stabilization phase, how long do you expect before, I guess, it's smooth sailing?
Yeah, that's a really good, yeah, that's a really good question, President Sanders. The contractual stabilization with our vendor is four months. But it's possible that the actual, the real stabilization could be longer. But, you know, we expect at least four months of of the really intense stabilization period to occur. It's four months and then we have final sign off of the system, but best practices and information from other implementations in the utility industry show that the stabilization can be, can extend farther than that.
Thank you.
All right. And that's all I have. I think it's back to Commissioner Communications.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. And our next item then will be the reports of meetings attended. And again, if Commissioner Bagnell is able and we're ready to go, Commissioner Bagnell?
I am here. My report of meetings attended on the 4th of January, I attended the board workstation, board work session, I should say, where we got the Willamette Water Supply Project update. And on the 13th, I attended a finance committee with Commissioner Duggan and with, of course, our CEO and CFO and legal counsel, where we talked about strategies for what we do about cost increases on the, due to inflation on the Willamette Water Supply Project. On the 14th, I attended the Barney Reservoir Joint Operating Committee, Joint Water Commission meeting, where we talked, we had elections for officers for the coming year. We talked about audits and of course, we got updates on plant operations. This morning, I attended the Westside Economic Alliance Legislative Update, where we heard two minutes from each of like 20 representatives and senators about how they plan to spend a billion dollars from the federal government and what bills they were looking at. And Tom Hickman attended that with me and asked a very insightful question, which everyone declined to answer. And then of course, tonight, the board meeting with district, regular district business.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagnell. Commissioner Doan?
Yes, I attended the board work session on the 8th. The supply group, group met, including Todd, to discuss the the issues with the WWSS. I attended the WJC Barney Joint Operating Commission meeting on the 14th, where Clean Water Services put increasing the capacity of Scoggins to bed once and for all. And then today's regular meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Doan. Commissioner Duggan?
I had a late December meeting, December 20th. I attended the Washington County Public Affairs Forum, where Dave Kraska did an excellent job presenting on the Willamette Water Supply System Project. On the 4th, I attended our board work session, where we got a WWSS update. On the 6th, I attended the actual WWSS board meeting, which is just the regular monthly meeting. On the 11th, I attended the board agenda planning meeting with our CEO and our commission president. On the 12th, I attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium Executive Committee meeting, where we got updates from staff and preliminary look at what the budget and dues will be for the coming year. Staff had two options, one roughly at 5%, which would keep existing programs, but would cut a few extras and a 7% increase that would pay for some strategic strategic items that staff and really keep us at full funding. On the 13th, I attended the, the finance committee meeting with Commissioner Bagnell and we, we did get updates on the financial condition of TVWD and the Willamette Water Supply System and then tonight's meeting. Oh, I also attended the Talking Water earlier today at noon, where staff did an excellent job talking about our proposed 209th facility there at Farmington. And there were a lot of tough questions and staff did a fantastic job of handling that. It was truly a team effort. And so everyone that participated in that or, or was a presenter in that should feel really, really good about how, how things came across because I was very impressed with staff. So that's it for my January.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. You look like you're about 90 miles or so west of us right now.
A little to the northwest as well.
That's right. Somewhere very coastal.
Somewhere very coastal and might even be joining you from out of state, but not too far from out of state. That a tsunami couldn't blow me back into the state.
Oh, good timing on that. All right, Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes, I have two to report, the work session and tonight's meeting. And that's it for me.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. And for myself, I met with, with CEO Tom Hickman on the 3rd to begin discussing how we would present the message for the Willamette Water Supply Project issues that everybody is now up to speed on. On the 4th, we had our board meeting. On the 6th, I met with Norm Eider to again discuss our message. And then later that evening, talked to Tom again about the same thing. And then on the, nope, you did not miss the joke, Bernice, we're saving it for the end of the meeting. On the 10th, I again met with Tom to not only continue to discuss the message for the budget update, but also to get started on an introduction for the Joint Water Commission, which I am now the current chair. Then on the 11th, we had our board agenda planning meeting with myself, CEO Hickman and Commissioner Duggan. Later the evening on the 11th, myself and Tom attended and Dave Kraska presented at the Beaverton City Council meeting. And I can say from that meeting that the language used by the council members in Beaverton was very positive. And that I left that meeting feeling good about their position. And I know they had a meeting last night, but I can't tell you what their final decision was with regards to their recommendation for their representative of the Willamette Water Supply Commission, which would be Mark Sinseui. So it was on their agenda last night to give him direction. And I don't know how that turned out last night, but I do know that in the agenda or in the meeting packet, the staff was recommending to the board commissioners, council members, my apologies, was recommending to the council members to support the change in budget and the change in baseline for the Willamette Project. Continuing on with that, on the 12th, I had the meeting with Commissioner Doan and most of the management staff from TVWD on the Willamette Project as it stands. And then on the 14th, along with Commissioner Bagnell and Commissioner Doan, I attended the Joint Water Commission and Barney Reservoir Joint Operating Commission meeting, where both of them gave updates. And the only thing I'll add to that is from the meeting, it appears that Clean Water Services has heard from the Bureau of Reclamation that as Commissioner Doan has properly said, they are going to, once and for all, put aside the idea of expanding the capacity of the Henry Hagg Lake Scoggins Dam system. However, BOR, Bureau of Reclamation, the owner of the dam, has come to Clean Water Services and said, we have money now and would like to, I, I'm going to use the word fast track, the process of seismically upgrading Scoggins Dam. And that price in $2020 was about 770 million. $2022, $2022 is probably a little more. And the agreement that the Bureau of Reclamations has presented was an 85-15 ratio of cost with Bureau of Reclamation taking on 85% of the cost and the other members or the owners of the Scoggins Dam Henry Hagg system having to address the other 15. And I believe those members consist of the Joint Water Commission, the city of Hillsborough, the city of Beaverton and the city of Forest Grove. So that amount would be about $150 million. And the plan was to begin getting started with this project as soon as June of 2022. And I see Bernice has her hand up?
Yes, I just actually wanted to thank both you and Commissioner Doan for. for bringing up that really important, that huge decision that occurred at the Joint Water Commission. That joint project to raise the Skoggins Dam or to build a second dam below the first to increase capacity has been a huge issue for the last 20 years. And it's something that I have worried very much about. We've all worried incredibly about that that would be a second gigantic water supply project that would affect the same group of ratepayers. And it's been extremely worrisome. And it's nice to see, it's a relief to see some resolution on that project and some, I would characterize, clearer thinking on what are other alternatives to lower the temperature of the effluent into the Tuolatin River and to look at the Safety of Dam project just by itself without trying to build a second major supply project for the same group of customers in this region. It's a huge, big deal that this question has finally been resolved and in a manner that is not as expensive as what they were considering before. So again, thanks for bringing that up. And I'm sorry I didn't include it in my report, but I'm really glad you guys covered it.
Well, if you had covered it, then I would have had nothing to talk about. So thank you for giving me something to say about the JWC meeting. So indeed, as Commissioner Bagnell just pointed out, from this point on, the only action or the action that will be taken on Skoggins Dam will be the seismic retrofitting of the dam to protect downstream and to protect the existing system. And there will be no capacity increase at that location. Then on the eighteenth, I spoke with CEO Hickman again. We were again talking about what our partners are thinking and doing, Hillsborough and Beaverton, with regards to the increase in costs of the Willamette project. And then also getting kind of an update on the lobbying effort that is being made to try to find funds for this particular activity. And then tonight's meeting. So it's been a busy month, but unnecessarily busy month. All right. There's some good comments in the chat this evening. The next item are topics to be raised by commissioners. And I wondered, or do we have any topics that are to be raised by commissioners?
This is Dick, not here.
Thank you. All right, not hearing anything else. We're going to move to the public comment section of today's presentation. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items, the consent agenda, and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons who would like to comment?
I believe we do. President Sanders, I just want to make sure that she, her mic is activated, so... Debbie, are you working on that?
So are you, are you speaking about Ms. Dougherty? She indicated she was not going to speak this evening, but she would in a future meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought she wanted to speak tonight. I apologize.
Understood. Very well. Thank you for that update. And of course, Ms. Dougherty is welcome to speak whenever she feels comfortable. Moving on then to item number one, this would be this evening's consent agenda. And the consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items, which do not require discussion. Those items this evening are the approve, to approve, the December fifteenth, 2021, regular meeting minutes and to approve the January fourth, 2022, work session minutes. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Commissioner Bagnell. I'm sorry, Commissioner Doan, I think I stomped on you. This is Commissioner Bagnell, and I move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Thank you.
This is Jim Dowd, and I second.
Thank you, Commissioners Bagnell and Commissioner Doan for seconding. I would like to now ask our district recorder to provide the roll call vote.
Commissioner Bagnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Doan?
Aye.
Commissioner Duggan?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you. We'll move on next to item number two this evening, which is our business agenda. And we are going to now consider adopting Resolution 01-22, a resolution adopting the investment policy for the Tuolatin Valley Water District. And this will be a staff report by CFO Paul Matthews. Paul, take it away.
Good evening, President Sanders, Commissioners, members of the public. This is a rather routine matter, so I'll go through it pretty quickly. This is approving the district's investment policy. We do it each year in January. Key elements of the district's investment policy is, first, it is adopted annually as required by law. This allows the district to invest in securities with maturity that exceeds eighteen months, which is advantageous to the district's investment objectives. Annual adoption of the investment policy is required by ORS 294.135, because we do have those securities exceeding the eighteen-month window. We base our policy on recommendations from our professional investment advisors. They help us, they review our investment objectives, the investments that were authorized to purchase, and requirements for our portfolio diversification. It's important to note that when the district invests its excess funds, it does it in bonds only. We're not talking about securities. We don't buy stock. We literally are buying bonds that meet the investment criteria. So what are these principles, the criteria that we use in our investments? Starts with limited risk. We want to have a return of our investment, not just return on our investment. So we do limit our risk. We obviously follow state law. But we do look for a return. We try to maximize the return on our investments. This allows us to offset the other costs that we have of operating the district and investing in our capital program, as well as liquidity. This is something that we spend a lot of time working on, because the money that we have invested really serves two purposes. One is just for the daily cash needs of the district. But the second, most important one right now, is to manage our investment in the water supply system. So we look at liquidity, when we're going to need the money, and we buy securities that match that. And then the last item there is safety. Again, we want to have the return of the money. We don't take excessive risks at all. But we do balance the risk and return. We've talked about this before, so we're going to go through this quickly. I talk to you each year about this, but I think it is important. One of the risks that we have, and we can't get away from this risk, is what we call interest rate risk. And that means that the market value of our investments change based on interest rates. So we buy a bond from, let's say, the US government, and it has an interest rate associated with that, and we pay a certain dollar amount to acquire that bond, so that the return we get is at the market of that day. If six months later, interest rates go up, the value of that bond actually is reduced, and that's what we call interest rate risk. And investments with a longer maturity are more sensitive to the change of the interest rate. So we want to manage the maturities to manage that interest rate risk. We stay relatively short in the market, meaning we don't go out and have long durations on our bonds. We do stay relatively short, not only to manage the interest rate risk, but also because of our liquidity concerns. But we generally hold our securities to maturity. So even though the market may say our bond went up or down in value, the fact that matters, we generally hold those. We earn the return that we were promised when we bought the bond, and we get the principal back at the end. So we generally hold securities to maturity, which gives us the book yield. Finally, we focus on the benchmarks for the duration to help the district avoid the risk of trying to time the market. We aren't out there trying to buy and sell securities to time the market. We have benchmarks and durations that we've developed with our professional advisors, and we stick to those things. The district is not a hedge fund. We're a water district, and we invest these monies in a very conservative manner in that regard. So our recommendation and findings first. The proposed Resolution 0122, it does comply with ORS 294.135. It follows the Oregon Short Term Fund Board Guidelines, and it's consistent with the recommendation of the district's investment advisors. So staff recommends adopting Resolution Number 0122, a resolution adopting the investment policy for the Tuolatin Valley Water District. And with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
This is Dick. That really sounds good to me. Somebody's done their homework.
This is Commissioner Bagnell. I would like to comment that I really appreciate that we are holding the line with our investment policy, which is very conservative and very risk averse, and yet, you know, keeps us earning a reasonable return on our investments. And I appreciate the work that staff has done to make that happen. And with that, I would like to move that we that we adopt the Resolution 0122, resolution adopting the investment policy for the Tuolatin Valley Water District.
This is Commissioner Duggan. I second that motion.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Bagnell and Commissioner Duggan. I'd like to ask our district recorder to provide the roll call vote.
Commissioner Bagnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Doan?
Aye.
Commissioner Duggan?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes. Next item on our agenda this evening is to consider approving a motion in support of proceeding with the Willamette Water Supply Systems Reservoir 1.0/PLM 5.3 Project GMP, Guaranteed Maximum Price. And this comes from our staff report and Dave Kraska.
So I believe I'm kicking this off, and then I will be handing it off to Mr. Kraska and to Mr. Matthews. So just to set the stage for tonight, what we're asking for from the board is to consider one of these two motions. What was sent out in the board packet ahead of time was a single motion that was just providing guidance specifically on the GMP related to Reservoir 1 and PLM 5.3. After discussing, thinking about it, discussing, discussing with our partners, that didn't make a lot of sense, because the financial analysis that we have done and undertaken that we'll be presenting here tonight, it actually is for that and the water treatment plant, GMP, and the updated baseline budget. So it makes a lot more sense than to consider an option that approves all of those things. So we've added that as a second option tonight, so the board can choose at the end which option they prefer to go with for approval. So what we're going to do here tonight is first, Dave Kraska is going to run through the overall project and where it stands. Some of this information you've seen. And then he will hand it off to Mr. Matthews, where Paul will take us through the financial impacts. And that is the big thing that we want the board to understand before making either of these motions, is that there's an understanding of this is what the financial impacts are. I will add one other thing to this that I guess could flavor your decision-making. We heard from Beaverton today that they've approved all of these for their council. And so, in other words, the option two. And we've heard from the Hillsborough Water Commission that they also have done the same thing. So it would be, option two would parallel what our partners have decided. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Dave Kraska and let him take us through this.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm going to press the Take Control button and see if it allows me to do just that. And my screen goes wild. But maybe I've got control now. Let's find out together. There it is. I do have control. Okay. So first, I'm going to talk to you about just the one project that my staff report was written about. It's the Reservoir 1.0 PLM 5.3 project. And there's a couple of graphics here to show you what that looks like. On the left-hand side is our reservoir project on top of Cooper Mountain, right off of Graborn Road. On the right-hand side of that, you see the planned two 15-million-gallon concrete storage tanks. Only one of them will be built in the initial construction. But constructing that entails basically excavating a bench for the construction site there, a rock retaining wall behind the tanks. And then the one tank, the first tank that we're going to be building is the eastern tank, the one that's more on the inside of that property. The green area there on the west or the left-hand side of that graphic is our staging area for all of this construction, so that we can keep it efficient and approximate to the actual construction zone. So that's the Res 1.0 project. Combined with that project is our PLM 5.3 project, which is, as stated there on the right-hand side, there are about four miles of 66-inch finished water, 66-inch diameter finished water transmission main. So pretty big project, all in all. Next slide is about our Construction Manager General Contractor. Like on some of our other projects, we're using the CMGC delivery vehicle. On this one, Hoffman Fowler is the CMGC for this project. We executed a contract with them in December of 2020. They have design phase services to help us during the design phase of both of these projects, and they are preparing or have prepared two guaranteed maximum prices. One is just for the pipe fabrication, and that one was executed back in October for almost just shy of 20 million dollars. GMP number two is for everything else on this particular project, and that's what's really we're discussing here today. We are targeting a limited notice to proceed on January 24th and a formal notice to proceed on March 3rd. A lot of outreach was conducted by Hoffman Fowler in advance of bidding. Invitations were sent to over 6,000 bidders, and through that process, 500 businesses signed confidentiality agreements to get access to our documents. We held several pre-bid meetings with the contractor and numerous advertisements, some of which are listed here, really to generate a lot of interest in this project and try to get as much competition on it as possible. Now, I have a couple of examples for you of what the competition looked like. On this one, we have a ground improvement project. So part of the pipeline project that crosses Farmington Road, some of the soils in that area are likely to move during a major earthquake event. And so we want to improve the soil conditions in that area where our pipeline is going to exist. And so that area is located on private property, and we identified acceptable technologies for this work, being jet grouting and cemented deep soil mixing. We received four bids for this work, so there was good competition on it. However, of the four bids, Pacific Foundation, their bid was deemed non-responsive for various reasons. Now, in that bidding, though, we did good competition. And you can see from this, it's a AGI, was identified as the winning bidder. Now, this is both on-price and qualification, so really... Now, this is both on price and qualification, so really we won on both counts here. Using the best value uh approach, it gives us both uh the the best of both worlds, being able to see the cost and also the qualifications. You'll see there in the middle of this table, uh, an acronym BAFO that's best and final offer. So this is where we negotiated a bit with the with the bidders to find out what is their best and final offer for this work. With the winning bidder, it came in low and they're also deemed most qualified, so we're quite happy result there. Uh, similarly, we did best value selection on the on the work package for the for the concrete of the reservoir project. Uh, the structural concrete concrete bid package included the concrete reinforcing, cast-in-place concrete, concrete curing. It did not include the prestressing because it's a specialty contractor that does that. I know there's only one contractor that does that. On this work, we got three bidders, Ward Henshaw, Hoffman's Hoffman Structures and Marion Construction. And this is the results of those bids. And as well, similar to the ground improvement work for the pipeline, Ward Henshaw was not only the highest qualified, but also had the best price for us. So again, a win for us in terms of the pricing and the qualifications of the contractor we have selected for this work. That's just two examples. Basically, we assemble all of the bids for the individual pieces of the of the Res one point O PLM five point three project to get us to GMP number two that you see on this chart of about a hundred and twenty-four million dollars. We always hold project contingency on our budgets, so that gets us to a project subtotal here of about a hundred and forty-eight million dollars. Now unfortunately, uh, for for this project, the current budget baseline is a hundred and six, about a hundred and seventeen million dollars. So we identified an overage of about thirty-one million dollars. And this is information that is shared with you over the last month and it's uh in our analysis of it. Uh, we're not done yet, though that that's the uh GMP that we're having. We're still continuing to try to find value opportunity on this project. Uh, listed here are four of those that we're working on. Uh, first one is using a mobile crane instead of a tower crane that might be able to save us about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Potential to reuse rock that we're going to be excavating, value of that is about five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. We're trying to shorten the construction duration. That might save us about a half a million dollars. And then additional bids for site fencing, fencing and site concrete that should save us about two hundred thousand dollars. So we're continuing to work and trying to improve the budget on this project. So with the increase or with the higher value, uh, as I've mentioned before in a in a previous presentation, uh, the program looked across the across the whole uh program and looking at the cost implications of these higher bids that we're getting in on this one and other projects. And we provided an updated cash flow spreadsheet to all of our partners, including TVWD that was done back in December twenty-eighth. And the finance team are reviewing the impact of these cost changes. We had a financial coordination meeting to get everyone together and make sure that we had, we're all using the same information and answered questions back on January eleventh. Um, however, as those analyses are occurring, um, approving the reservoir and pipeline GMP on January twenty, which is the special WWSS uh commission board meeting tomorrow, is critical to staying on schedule for the permitted work and containing the costs. And what I mean by that, for the permitted work, there's tree clearing work that we need to get done before bird nesting season that begins in March and also wetlands crossing work that is timed with our construction process. That again, if we don't get out there in time, we might lose a year. Um, and in addition, given the volatility of the market that we have right now, moving quickly on approving, improving this price allows us to hold the subs and vendors and suppliers and their prices. Uh, we fear if we have to rebid any of this work because we delay too much, we might actually get even higher prices. And so with that, we're targeting the special meeting on December tw- on the January twentieth tomorrow to move as quickly as possible. And as stated in my staff report, we had this option one requested motion. Um, as you heard earlier in this presentation, uh, CEO Tom Hickman uh talked about how everyone, all of our partners and us are also looking at kind of the broader implication on the of the costs on the overall program. And perhaps we should take a bigger view of this as far as what motion should be taken to provide guidance to Commissioner Duggan, who is TVWD's representative on the WWSS Commission. So as a quick reminder, uh, at this moment right now, we are bidding all of the remaining major projects in this fiscal year. Listed on the left-hand side are all of the remaining construction opportunities or construction bids on the program. By the end of this year, everything will be in construction. We will be completely out of the design business. And as I presented in a, it made a made a presentation at the work session earlier this month, I showed you these two projects that came in significantly higher than than budget, uh, presented this. This information came in in December and uh on the right, left-hand side is the project I just I just presented to you, the reservoir and pipeline project. But also we got news on a water treatment plant project that that one as well is significantly over budget in terms of the prices in this current market at this time. And so that was the news that we had for you earlier on. And as I mentioned, uh, in in another presentation, with this challenging information on the finance, we did a deep dive in terms of making sure that these were quality GMPs, quality guaranteed maximum prices that we could count on, that we didn't miss any steps in preparing them. And I won't go through all of the details um in this chart that I did in an earlier presentation, but suffice to say, these are quality GMPs and this is just where the market is right now. Uh, so overall, over the entire program, and again, taking what we believe is a fairly conservative look, what is the current market implications on our overall program costs? And this is right now where we're communicating and identified approximately three hundred fifteen million dollar increase on the overall program costs, broken out in this way, about two-thirds are the other recent bids that I just mentioned to you. Um, the the uh project estimates as far as the additional projects that we have left to bid, about an additional seventy million roughly, and then some smaller elements to add up to that three hundred and fifteen million dollars. So given that, given the knowledge that we have right now, that 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 things are getting more expensive and significantly so in some ways, uh, rather than taking a single action on just the one uh project, it may be appropriate and efficient to take a larger action if the board so chooses and the motion would read like this uh action right here. Um, obviously, however, before you take that action, it's it's critical to understand what are the real financial implications to the district and to rates and so on. And so with that information, I'll pass it to CFO Paul Matthews. Take it away, Paul.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, so what was the problem? A little bit of feedback there from someone. Uh, so so here we have the the problem statement, the the actual problem is, and it's TVWD's share of the capital cost. Listed here are the projects that Dave talked about and some of the other things that are affecting our overall financial strategy based on the uh increase in the capital cost. If we break it down by year, uh, which we show here in this chart, you can see the gray bars are the uh uh, the expected capital expenditures that we had when we adopted our our current budget and set our current rates. Uh, the red hashed bars are based on the latest information we have from the program. And as you can see, between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-five, we have quite a bit more in capital expenditure than what we had initially planned. Uh, if you look down at the bottom, you can actually see that that amount is about two hundred million dollars uh just uh in our our capital projects. Uh, look at the bottom table on the far right. So that is our problem. How are we going to fund this additional two hundred million dollars? I want to show you the detail here, how it breaks down by the different project details. So in this particular chart, um, showing the in-district CIP, the TVWD CIP is that first block, that dark gray block, and that's the regular capital expenditures that we have at the district that are necessary to keep uh the system in operating uh in good operating shape. And that is something, of course, our chief engineer, uh, Kerry Pack manages. The bar above that, the slightly lighter gray bar, uh, under twenty twenty-two shows forty million dollars. That's actually in the district's capital improvement, but that's for the Metzger Pipeline East. That's the major pipeline that connects to the Willamette Water Supply System that Dave's team, uh, the Willamette Water Supply Program is building on behalf of TVWD. That's been permitted. That's all part of the uh WWSP, although it's not an asset of the Willamette Water Supply System. It is an asset of TVWD. I break that out separately so that you can see uh the impact that that project has on the overall district CIP. And then the last uh, the top element of of the stacked bar chart is the uh uh, the blue area, that is for the rest of the Willamette Water Supply System. Uh, and you can see that that's the bulk of our capital expenditures. Couple of things I I want to point out this uh chart, it's not going to surprise you. We've been looking at this same sheet now for several years. Uh, the district is in a major capital investment cycle. We're investing a lot of money between now and twenty twenty-six as we complete the Willamette Water Supply System. And uh, and and this is essentially uh sort of what we describe as our financial pinch point. Uh, once we get past twenty twenty-six, then the financial pressure and the needs for capital uh, the dollars for capital investment, as you can see, uh, decline. Now, this isn't new. I've said we've talked about this for years. And in fact, in preparation of the current budget, the current financial plan, you might remember that uh we asked the program to look at delaying some project costs and they found about fifty million dollars in capital projects that were deferred. And that would be one of the fifteen million gallon reservoirs. Uh, there were going to be two fifty million gallon reservoirs at the reservoir site. They're going to do one now and one subsequent later, uh, much later in the program. You can see it out there, twenty thirty and twenty thirty-one. The other is uh PLW Pipeline West, PLW two point O, which is a pipeline that goes up to uh according to this fast near highway twenty-six. That last lay also was deferred. So in preparation of this budget, we did push a lot of projects as well as we were worked carefully with Kerry and her team to move as much of the in-district CIP out as possible because between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-six, that is uh the pinch point for the district. So we took a lot of actions last year uh to clear the way for uh the funding the program. Okay, so where where does that stand? Uh, here we're presenting uh two uh two tables. The top one is uh the financial uh funding strategy that we had in the fall of twenty twenty-one. And that's got the gray bar uh following that uh that description. Down below, you'll see the January twenty twenty-two uh financial uh plan, the way that we would fund it. And if you look there, uh, we're going to fund some with cash and some with debt. Look at the bottom part of of the financial strategy, you can see that uh we're looking at issuing uh about six hundred million dollars of of debt. Whereas last fall, when we looked at that, we were looking at about four hundred million dollars of debt. So we're looking at essentially two million dollars more debt uh to finance these improvements. The challenge with issuing that additional debt is on the district's capacity to borrow. So uh, we look at a a metric uh called the net leverage ratio and this is a a measure of how leveraged the district is, how much debt the district has uh versus its ability to pay. And 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 we look at that, a couple of things that um that we have. First of all, the district has a policy that we wouldn't let our net leverage exceed eight, eight point O. Uh, that's a district policy uh that we follow. The industry standard actually is is uh a net leverage of seven. Keep in mind that in this case, lower is better, higher is 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 not as good. So you might ask, why would we allow our net leverage to get above seven, let alone to get above eight? Um, if we're in this investment cycle, what is that going to do to the district's credit rating? And I'm I'm confident to say that uh we have a story that we can tell the market uh to tell S and P and and Fitch uh that the district's plan is we migrate off of the Portland system and onto the new Willamette Water Supply System, that we'll get our net leverage down and falling, down below seven uh by twenty twenty-seven and falling. So, uh, but this is the limiting factor. Oftentimes, we've talked about debt service coverage ratios, uh, which is a different measure of the district's financial health. And in that case, a higher number is actually better. Uh, that isn't what binds the district right now. It is this net leverage calculation. And uh, the way that we can lower that net leverage is through uh in increasing our our revenue. Okay, so I want to put this in just into context. Uh, these are not proposals by any stretch. Uh, I want to put into context what this uh additional financing would mean. So if we needed about two hundred million dollars of additional money, we'd have to issue about two hundred and five million dollars uh to cover the issuance cost and and some of the other cost of of debt, including having a reserve and some other things. So uh, we'd borrow about two hundred and five million dollars over a thirty-year period at three and a half percent interest rate. That would mean our our annual debt service would increase by about twelve million dollars. So presented here, we have uh that twelve million dollars as that red line that we go across. The the bars that we have here, the vertical bars show uh our adopted uh budget. So for our material and services budget, um, we have a an adopted budget of of, and this is on an annual basis, of about twenty-five point eight million dollars. Uh, so if we were to say, let's cut our M and S budget by twelve million dollars, uh, that would almost be half of that. Keep in mind that about half of our M and S budget actually is for purchased water. So uh, if you take that out, because our contract with Portland and GWC doesn't allow us to cut those costs and we need that water, our customers rely on it, uh, that we do, wouldn't have uh really need material and services uh to fund the district operations. So what is in that material and services budget? That includes things like postage to send out uh bills, the printing of bills that we pay our vendor that does that. It includes fuel for our vehicles. It includes inventory that Kerry's team needs to uh to uh uh, run the water system, uh, includes chemicals, power, all those things run through that material and services budget. Uh, but what if we just set that aside and we looked at the personnel services? Uh, this is the cost of the people that we have. Uh, if we wanted to cut that by twelve million, we would, we would essentially have to cut our personnel services more than half. And uh, and this is a time that we're trying to build the staff resources actually to operate the Willamette Water Supply System. And then the last one is uh the in-district CIP. And that would be almost uh, it's about twenty-eight million dollars uh on average over the two-year period. And uh, that would, that would be a dramatic reduction in that. Uh, now what makes this particularly difficult is that for the M and S, the personnel services and the in-district CIP, as we were looking at the financial challenges we were looking at last year, we moved a lot of these things lower. We uh reduced our our expenditure. So there isn't um a lot of of items in there to cut. It really is uh to the point where reductions would be uh would 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 reduce the service levels dramatically to our customers. Uh, I do want to point out a a couple of other things. Um, uh, we wouldn't have to take twelve million out of any one of these items, right? We could take two million out of, out of uh three of them and and say, well, let's go for a six million dollar cut. And uh, and and so those are the kinds of things that we can look at. However, they aren't going to move uh our, they're not going to move the needle in a material way. And we uh continue to analyze that through our financial planning efforts. Okay, so what are the rate options uh that uh that we have? If we're going to look at borrowing that additional two hundred million dollars, letting our net leverage go up a bit, but not in, not uh, but still keep it in a manageable way. Um, as you know, the district, uh, the board adopted uh for, as part of the annual budget process, uh, you adopted uh two rate increases uh last September. The first one went into effect on November first of twenty twenty-one for fiscal year twenty-two. And the second one is scheduled to go into effect uh November of twenty twenty-two, which would be for fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, so when you look at this chart, that's represented by uh by the uh red line. And if you look at the table down below, you can see the uh January twenty-two uh numbers. Now, if we ran, if 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 we have those two rate increases in place and we balance uh the the rest of the improvement, uh, the rest of the increase in our our cost to fund uh the program in years twenty-four and twenty-five, that would necessitate a rate increase of about fifteen percent to generate the money necessary to cover that uh, that increase in our capital expenditure. So we'd be looking at about fifteen percent rate increases. We show fourteen point nine percent because we have affinity for decimal points and everything like that. But given the uncertainty, it really is somewhere around fifteen percent. So we don't want to have precision over accuracy here. Uh, as an alternative, if we were to make an adjustment effective, this coming November, November of twenty-two, uh, which would be for fiscal year twenty-three, and we were to spread that over a three-year period, uh, we'd end up with about the same financial condition by doing three twelve percent rate increases over that same period of time. Okay. I'm giving you a lot of information. I'm going uh fast, so please interrupt me if if I'm uh not being clear. Uh, we we do look at the impact on the typical bills and this chart presents that. Uh, over time, those two are going to converge. In the near term, there are some slight differences, but over the longer term, uh, they they do uh converge together. All right, I I need to highlight the risks that we have to the forecast because there are some. And and as we go through these analyses, we don't want folks to think that we've nailed down everything and uh that that we have more knowledge than frankly uh the market allows us to have. So so the first thing I want to talk about is the risk of uh interest rates and inflation. So, so the first thing I want to talk about is the risk of, uh, interest rates and inflation. And, uh, our future borrowing cost that we have in, in the financial plan is based on, uh, the advice that we have from experts. Uh, interest rates are very volatile. In fact, we're starting to see an upward trend in those now. Uh, but we have in there interest rates at three and a half percent. Uh, the district's borrowing cost could go up. And of course, if that happens, that's going to translate into higher borrowing cost and, uh, more cost, uh, for our, uh, for our debt service. Uh, the Willamette Water Supply Program's capital cost, we've got good estimates and, and Dave's team has got a lot of the bids out of the way. But we still have a lot of construction risk in front of us. We still have a lot of projects that need to be bid and a lot of cost out there. The program has, but estimates in there and, and Dave talked about that. We have questions. We can put him back on the hot seat. But there is still risk that those costs can come in higher. As well as the districts, uh, the in district CIP, the CIP that our chief engineer's team manages. Uh, those costs are affected similarly by the same market conditions that have driven up the cost for the, uh, for the, uh, water supply program. And, and those are, you know, related to the general rate of inflation, related to local market conditions, the supply chain issues, everything else. Those things exist for the rest of our, uh, projects as well. And then, uh, schedule risk, if, if projects get delayed, given the, the inflationary expectations that we have, it actually becomes more expensive. Uh, because the cost grew up over time. And so I think Dave was talking about trying to hold those bids in place. And that's an imperative for us to, to, uh, get some answers to his questions. But we do look at schedule risk and if there are delays in the schedule, that could result in higher cost. And then our operating expenses, uh, inflation is going to affect our operating expenses as well. And as we go through time, we've already seen an increase in fuel costs, we're going to see an increase in power costs. There may be an impact on the rest of our M and S as well as our personal services budget. So we still have risk associated with those operating expenses. Uh, the other thing that's important for us to look at is the future cost of, of water. So in our financial plan, we have estimates of what it's going to cost to get water out of the new supply program. But we haven't completed some of the staff planning, uh, with our partners as to how we're going to operate the plant. Uh, power and chemical costs, we have a good estimate of how many kilowatt hours it's going to take to move a million gallons of water from, uh, the Willamette and get it all the way into our system. But, uh, the cost per kilowatt hour is a little bit more a, a difficult testament as well as chemical cost. And because this is a new system, there could be other unforeseen costs that we, uh, identify as we go forward. So I did identify the future cost of water as a risk. And our future revenues, uh, customer growth and SDCs help fund, uh, part of our, uh, capital investments and a slowdown in growth. Uh, could have, uh, an impact on that as well as water demands. As our cost of water goes up, it affects customers, uh, the amount of water they demand. And, uh, weather and as well as economic conditions also can dramatically affect our water demand. So we'll watch that very carefully. Uh, the city of Beaverton, uh, may annex and withdraw certain parts of our service area, which would diminish our revenue base and have a, a negative, uh, effect on us. And then the last item I have here is affordability and collection concerns. Um, many of our customers are finding it extremely difficult to pay their, their bills. And these adjustments are, are going to, are going to make that even more difficult. So as part of that, you know, you've, uh, through the budget process, you appropriate money for the customer emergency assistance fund. We are laying on getting water through the, uh, ARPA funds from the federal government, uh, and clean water services and the county is managing that. And we have a new, uh, low income, uh, water, uh, program that's also federally funded coming on board. But the district may have to do more, uh, on the affordability collections fronts to help our customers. Uh, some can afford it, some can't. We need to make sure that we're taking care of all of our customers. And then the last category I have are the black swan events, the things that by definition, we don't know. It may be a good question, why would I make a list of things that we're not supposed to know, but there they are. Uh, so as, uh, Andrew Carlstrom talked about, we're in the final stages of implementing our CIS project. Uh, those are high-risk projects and we're putting a lot of attention on that. But any, any, uh, challenges with the CIS project, uh, that isn't the time that you want to go out and issue $200 million additional debt. If you're having challenges with your billing system. Uh, the pandemic, we have one now. I didn't expect it when we did this, uh, four years ago. Who knows what's going to be happening in the future? Uh, war and complex supply chain issues, it could get worse. Um, there could be war either in, um, Central Europe or frankly, in Asia or somewhere else. And, uh, and that could have, uh, introduced complexity in supply chain as well as other costs. And then of course, black swan events, what else is out there that, uh, that we might have to deal with? With that, uh, I'm going to turn this over to Tom and he's going to take us into the home stretch.
Thank you, Paul. And, uh, so there are some positive risks. Uh, I don't know if it's a risk if it's positive, um, but, uh, it, the, the, these could impact the forecast. So first and foremost is grant opportunities. Uh, almost every day I have been on the phone, uh, with either our lobbyists or, uh, with legislators. Uh, in fact, spoke, uh, today with a legislator, um, and letting them know of the situation that we're in. Uh, we are looking for every opportunity to get funding, um, and make it clearly known that we, we are in need of this. Um, right now there's about $400 million in unspent ARPA funds that the state is holding on to. Uh, and there are rules around how they can allocate that and use that. We fit nicely in those rules, uh, that those dollars have an expiration date on them, uh, for the state. So the state has to allocate those dollars, uh, before the end of 2024. And, uh, so we're trying to position ourselves, uh, at least for some potential money through, through those, um, allocation of funds yet. Uh, so that's, that's one way we're trying. We're also at a federal level looking at this. Um, and doing all we can to essentially make sure that there isn't a rock unturned out there that, um, we, we're trying to make it clear. Uh, I will point out, um, that we're letting state legislators know that out of, uh, the three partners on the project. We are the only partner that received no ARPA funds. Um, our other partners received ARPA funds for other things, not specific to this project. Um, but had we received funding for other things, uh, we certainly would be in a better budget position to, to address these increases. So, um, we're trying to make that crystal clear that, um, we, we were cut out of that. Yet we are, uh, a, a government entity that, just like the cities, that were in need of that funding. The other thing we're looking at is, uh, economies of scale by wholesale services. So we're, we're having conversations, um, with, uh, partners like Beaverton. Um, and, and others to see if there's an opportunity where we could, uh, sell, uh, more water and, uh, be in a position that we can help essentially spread the cost out over a larger number, uh, of people. So, uh, with all of that, that brings us to the, uh, end of where we're at tonight. And the requested action, uh, is for the board to, uh, consider, uh, voting for one of these two. So first, uh, I guess a consensus of the, the board to whether they want to go with option one or option two. And then, uh, a motion to move forward with, with the chosen option. Uh, so we are all here, uh, and happy to answer any questions. We've gone through these motions, uh, before with you earlier in the presentation. Um, but if you have any additional questions, uh, we're happy to answer.
Bernice, Commissioner Bagnell, do you have a question?
I don't have a question. I just want to say how very much I appreciate how much work that, um, Dave Kraska has done to analyze all of the bids and all of the options available to us. And I also really want to recognize how much work and how much effort has gone into the financial forecasting that CFO Paul Matthews and his team have done. Those long-term forecasts that TVWD does, those dynamic forecasting efforts set us apart from not only our customers, but from all, all other public entities. And that makes a, a huge difference when we're looking at, uh, when we're looking at debt issuance and financial feasibility and the rating agencies. The rating agencies give us a better rating because they see that we're planning for the future responsibly. And that we are constantly looking at and updating those, those forecasts. And I, I just, I just want to recognize all of the work done by staff on both sides. That not only the, the project management and construction cost estimates, but the financial planning element.
Tom, you have?
Yeah. So I, I just want to, uh, Commissioner Bagnell, you, you reminded me that, um, one of the things that we do want to do is sometime in February, uh, come back to the board with, uh, some additional detail in terms of the rate suggestions, uh, that were, um, provided by the Water Supply Committee and the Finance Committee. Um, we want to come back with those results, uh, because you, uh, you had laid out some ideas that we're, we've, we're in the preliminary stages of running those. So, um, wait, just to make clear, we haven't forgotten about that and we'll come back in February with the results of those financial analysis.
So this is Todd Sanders. Uh, you know, first we're, I'm going to echo, uh, what Commissioner Bagnell said. Um, for those that may not be aware, uh, you know, this, the finance team worked all the way through the holidays on getting to this point. Um, which, you know, the rest of us were on holiday during the holidays. Uh, and then to add to that, um, you know, Paul got sick. So, uh, the rest of his team had to, you know, do an even larger Herculean effort. So first acknowledge that and then also acknowledge, um, you know, Dave Kraska's team. Uh, Dave himself had to go in front of the Beaverton, um, Board of Commissioners last week, which, um, I was sweating just watching. So, uh, you know, again, congratulations to them. Um, Tom, you might want to remind the board or clarify that all of our partners, Hillsborough and Beaverton have, um, approved both the GMP for Reservoir 1.0 as well as the GMP for the water treatment plant. Um, so they have not chosen option one path. They have chosen option two path. Is that correct?
That is correct. They've, uh, vote, uh, uh, supported option two. And I, and there's one other component to option two, which is, uh, essentially, um, they're passing the baseline budget, uh, 7.0. So that includes the forecasted increases to all the remaining elements of the project. So they've also, uh, passed that.
Great. Thank you. Uh, do any other board members have questions? Um, if you do or do not, um, maybe someone would like to bring up a motion on either option that they would prefer at this point.
This is Commissioner Bagnell. Can I move to approve option two without reading the whole thing?
Yes, you may.
Yes. And I am really impressed and thank you for the reminder that our partners have approved that option as well.
Yeah, this is Dick. Yeah, this is Dick. I, I concur with Bernice on this one, option two.
Uh, Commissioner Duggan, you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, before a vote is called, I, I would just like to reassure my other commissioners that, uh, even if a dark gray goose appears on the horizon, we'll be talking, um, about this stuff, but I, I feel comfortable with option two.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Schmidt, did you second, uh, this motion?
Uh, I, I will, uh, okay, I will second it as of this moment.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. That case then, uh, I'd like to ask our district recorder to please provide a rule call.
Commissioner Bagnell?
Hi.
Commissioner Don?
Hi.
Commissioner Duggan?
Hi.
Commissioner Sanders?
Hi.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Hi.
Great. Sounds like the motion passes, but before we, uh, move beyond this, I see Jim Duggan has his hand up one more time.
You're muted.
Yeah, I'm trying to get the hand down. Sorry about that.
Okay, no worries.
I, I got the same problem that Jim Don had the last meeting. Sorry about that. There we go. I think.
Wonderful. Very good. Thank you. In that case, uh, the motion does pass. Um, if there are no other questions or other items, which, um, the agenda, there are none. Um, there will be no further business before the Board of Commissioners and the meeting is adjourned.